Council study session to order on May 23rd, 2022 at 6:00 PM. And we shall proceed. And with that, Mr. City Manager, you can present the budget if I'm understanding the agenda correctly.
You understand correctly.
Thank you, my friend.
Yes, all right. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor said, my name is Zach Walker, city manager. And in accordance with Section 8.2 of our city charter, it is my pleasure tonight to share with you our submitted budget for fiscal year 2022-23. Before I get too far down the road and get myself all worked into a lather, I do want to make sure I take a moment to thank our finance department, Brian Kidney, our finance, our budget manager, Erika Benitez, and all of our department directors who contributed mightily and heavily throughout the year. I appreciate their flexibility, their ingenuity, and their leadership in helping formulate this budget proposal for the council. So the total proposed budget for this year is $338, 86,187, which is a 0.21% increase over last year. That budget last year was just a shade over $337 million. The budget this year funds 1,176 full-time equivalent employees. I will point out for you that since the time I presented this budget to the Audit and Finance Committee on May the 6th, we have had a slight increase in total revenues as we sharpen our pencil and recognize the true impact of the fire sales tax increase to the use tax fund. So the use tax collects all the sales tax funds, but of course applies them to online purchases. And that increase to a half a percent has had a positive net effect on our total revenues and therefore on the budget. So a net increase from the budget I presented back on May the 6th of $450,000. So I want to highlight for you some of the challenges that we faced as we put together the budget this year. I hope I didn't get to the spoiler too fast, but this was not a year where we were dealing with a surplus. I often tell folks I hope that by the time I retire, we are dealing with a surplus, but still not there quite yet. Last year, as you will recall, we used the Federal American Recovery Plan Act dollars to help infuse much-needed cash into our budget, to the tune of about $3.1 million, which was very helpful, but the challenge was, of course, that that was only one-time revenues. So we, we do not have that luxury at our disposal this year, and that so automatically we started the year off with that, that hole in our budget. We are also continuing to face a very significant decrease from municipal court revenues. The council will recall, as a result of some of the unrest in Ferguson, Missouri several years ago, there were a number of reforms proposed through the General Assembly and adopted. Many of those very positive impact, I don't want to overshadow that. But one of the challenges we continue to face is when our police officers write a citation for a moving violation, there is no longer a tool in the judge's belt to enforce or compel an appearance in court. Prior to Senate Bill 5 going to effect, a judge would issue a series of warrants and then eventually would do a suspension of your driver's license for failure to appear. That no longer is happening, and word has spread mightily on that. So we have seen a precipitous drop in the number of people that appear in this courtroom that we stand in tonight to appear before the judge, and therefore our revenue is down this year to the tune of about $1.5 million. And that seems to be about where we have bottomed out. So I guess that's good news, but still we've lost about a $1.5 million in revenue, not to mention the public safety issues that go along with that. We have a statutory requirement to increase our loggers contribution by 1% every year. That is the pension system for the public employees in the state of Missouri, the local government arm of, of the state's pension system. So to fulfill our obligations there, that's about a 1% increase. As the council will recall, we have negotiated a number of increases in public safety to help retain and attract new public safety servants into our workforce. It's a very positive thing, but again, there is the ongoing cost of that. So that was a new cost that we had to account for this year. And then there are the annual costs every year that seem to just escalate faster than sometimes we are able to keep up with. Costs like health insurance, workers' compensation, just the price of labor, you know, to try to keep up with the market. Inflation is obviously a hot topic right now. We are tracking about 9% increase in the Consumer Price Index right now. And we're even seeing this in the cost of when we go out to bid. So our, our street overlay contract, the asphalt costs are up 33% over last year. So the cost of materials is meaning we're not able to go as far with some of these projects and services as we were a year ago at this time. So all of that in totality meant that your general fund budget started the year just to keep doing what we were doing this past year with a $5.3 million shortfall. That is not any new services, that's not any expansion, any new employees, that is just to do what we've been doing. So at that point, with the challenge in mind, my leadership team and I began to contemplate, what are the different options that we could bring to the council to help address this? Of course, we could try to take a look at some of these legacy expenditures that seem to be growing at unsustainable rates. Things like health insurance costs that for public and private sector are just skyrocketing annually faster than any entity or agency has been able to keep up with. We could take a look at our overtime policies, we could take a look at other personnel costs. And as you'll see, these are things we have weighed out and considered, and we'll come back to that in a moment. Other ideas were to try to bring in new industry and commerce that meets market demands, but also provides employment opportunities for our citizens in the city. And as a result, would create new economic activity and new revenue streams. And this council has done a number of projects in that area in the last year. Projects like Cargo Largo, projects like North Point, we believe that these are going to be an infusion into the budget. But, you know, these projects are not online yet, so the cavalry is not quite here yet. We couldn't quite rely on this strategy this year to help. We thought about, are there other revenue growth opportunities out there through ballot initiatives? And the answer to that question is yes, there are. But as we weigh the economic climate, a 9% increase in the Consumer Price Index, we didn't think in good conscience that this is the right time to be contemplating some of those tax issues and tax initiatives. It just, you know, we, we really wanted to be cognizant of the economic realities, and we don't feel like that's an appropriate conversation to have at this time. Strategically addressing service-level deployment models so that we match citizen demand to the service level. This is an annual exercise that we do challenge our directors with. Are we appropriately matching the citizens' calls for service and the other metrics that we track to figure out demand with the resources available? Is there an imbalance, either too short or too much resources dedicated to any one service? And, and we, we continue to believe that at worst, we are underfunded in areas. We, we really don't feel there's a lot of places where, to borrow the common vernacular, there's fat on the bone. We, we think we've done a good job with this. Making strategic use of one-time resources, this is what we did with the American Rescue Plan dollars last year. Unfortunately, that lifeline is not available to us this year. We looked for other opportunities, but they weren't there. And with our reserve balance still below that 16% threshold, we didn't think drawing down on that any further made economic sense either. And then the last option, of course, would be to make these across-the-board reductions to what I believe is already a meager workforce, and further reduce our ability to meet citizen demand for services in some of these high-priority areas. And as your manager, I just did not believe that that makes sense for two reasons. One, we are already spread so thin. And two, to get to $5.3 million, you're going to have to start chunking together a lot of painful cuts. When you start thinking about services like code enforcement is a $200,000 a year operation, dangerous building, about the same amount. I mean, you have to start chunking together a lot of those $200,000 and $300,000 programs. And at that point, when you get to $5.3 million, what kind of city do you have left? So we, we did not think that that was a good option to bring to you. Okay, so where did we end up? Well, let's talk briefly about some of the revenue pictures. Prop P, the, the changes in that that the voters made last November, that is going to mean an additional $1.4 million of revenue citywide, or $535,000 into the general fund. That is a plus, that thing continues to grow and do gangbusters, and we only see it exceeding. We don't think we've hit the ceiling on that quite yet. Our sales tax revenue at the brick and mortar stores are doing well. Those are up about 4.5% over last year. Again, through a ballot initiative, the gas tax has been raised. The City of Independence will recoup revenues from that, which will help us address our infrastructure needs. But on the downside, some of the traditional streams that we have used to fund ourselves continue to decline and erode. The legislature last year voted to decrease the cable franchise fee from 5% to 2.5 in a three-year step-down. That was part of the trade-off to get what's commonly known as the Wayfair legislation, to apply the sales tax online to all sales, not just those occurring within the state of Missouri. So we will see, by the time that's fully implemented, a 50% reduction in that revenue stream. Telephone franchise fees, we, we have seen people cutting the cord, going away from a landline. It's harder and harder to find somebody who still has that, so our revenue streams there are going away. And as I mentioned, court fines and revenues there are going down, along with the lack of the federal funds to infuse into the budget this year. Total general fund this year, $74.3 million, that's $3.7 million less than last year. Again, primarily because of the federal funds that aren't showing up in here. And then a lot of our expenses this year, savings in this current fiscal year that will end in about a month on June 30th are a result of one-time savings from vacant positions. So yes, it's great that we are planning to end the year with a surplus, but the bad news is that's coming as a result of having vacancies across the organization. So that's really not a success story we want to be telling. So let's talk about the proposed reductions for a minute.
Zach?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask one question?
No, please, jump in.
On the expenditures. Where it says the $3.7 million less than last year?
Yes.
Is that $3.7 million less in revenue before that federal, the federal monies that we own?
Yeah, it's, so it's offsetting, so the $3.1 million revenue came down, and then as a result of that, we brought those. So we did have some revenue growth this year, but the net impact is an overall reduction of $3.7 million in the general fund from last year.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem. And please continue to jump in as needed. So some of the reductions that we have pieced together to balance the budget for this year. Well, again, thanks to the voter support for the increase in the fire sales tax. We are able to hire more fire personnel, which helps manage our overtime costs. We're also able to bear the burden of those overtime costs more from the increased sales tax revenues. That presents a tremendous amount of relief to the general fund. I don't want us to get too comfortable with that, though, because as wages continue to increase and as we fill these positions, we think we'll grow into some of that savings over time. But for this year, this presents a very helpful and beneficial relief to the general fund for us. We are also proposing changes to what is known as the Fair Labor Standard Act, which applies to overtime. We briefly brought this up to the council on the heels of the IPD overtime issue, which is still being investigated by the third party. But let me give a, just a general overview on this again. Under the Fair Labor Standard Act, people working overtime begin to accrue it after they have worked 40 hours in a week. What independence practice has been and what's been adopted into policies is to apply that number with your accrued leave baked in as well. So in theory, I could be on vacation, I could take 40 hours of vacation that week, but still come in to work that week and earn time and a half because I've put in my 40 hours through my vacation leave, but I'm still here working. We estimate, based on a representative sample of salaries and overtime utilization in the general fund conservatively, and we really tried to go low on this number because I didn't want Councilmember Steinmeier telling me I was too optimistic this year. Annual tradition. We estimate a $315,000 savings there. We think that may be on the low end, but we'd rather it be on the low end and, and have more savings than the opposite outcome be true. We have also budgeted savings from vacant positions of $1.7 million, and let me explain that to you. At the time we put the budget together, we had about 60, 63 exactly, I think, positions vacant in the general fund. The theory here is no magic bean is going to spring on July 1st, the start of the fiscal year, and all those positions become filled. On average, we see it about, I mean, about 60 to 90 days to fill a position in the best case of scenarios. So we have budgeted some partial savings for both wages and benefits to capture that. Now again, that is a one-time strategy that's available to us. Hopefully this time next year, we've got all these positions filled, people are out serving the community. But for this year, we have that option available to us, and we are taking that. The last piece of this that I want to mention, and I know the council asked some questions about this last week, so I'll, I'll do my best to address this. We are proposing health insurance changes totaling $1 million. What we aren't proposing is to go in and cut the Stay Well Fund by $1 million, but to look for options that would present cost avoidance increases of $1 million. Now, the Stay Well Fund has been budgeted this year for a 10% premium increase, but that still isn't, in our estimation, working with our third-party advisory firm, CBIZ, sufficient to get us to where we need to be, okay? Using business terms, if we continue on the trajectory we're on, we're headed towards insolvency with that fund. So we have to find options to help us contain the cost, just like every other public and private sector industry out there. We have here in the city, a employee advisory committee, the Stay Well Health and Wellness Advisory Committee, made up of representatives from all of the different organized labor representatives, as well as the non-represented and retiree population as well. So everybody who's a part of that plan has a voice on that. We kind of started with the Stephen Covey model this year, start with the end in mind. Our belief is that we need to identify, the target is to get to $1 million in strategies that will present cost avoidance increases in that, and work backwards from that. These are not always fun or easy choices to make, and it's become easy for all of us, myself included, to think we'll deal with that next year. So we put this placeholder in the budget this year saying, we are at a point where we can't continue to avoid this. We have to figure out what we're doing, at least in the interim period. We, we worked really well a few years ago with the retired population to find a solution that worked for everyone there. And now we need to look for a solution with our active employees to help cover those costs and avoid that further increase in that. Here's what I don't want to do. For far too long, our strategy on this has been, well, we'll just do another premium increase. I just mentioned 10%. Here's the challenge with that. We are a self-funded health insurance plan. That means there are two places money comes from. The employee who pays into it, and the taxpayers who pay for our cost of operations here. And for every new dollar that goes into that fund, the employee puts in 20 cents, and the taxpayer puts in 80 cents. So if we're talking about a million-dollar increase, we're really talking about reaching in and pulling out a wad of cash to the tune of $800,000 out of the taxpayer's pocket. Looking around this community, recognizing the economic realities, looking at the census data that has just come out that talks about nearly a third of the people in the city being below the poverty line, having a household income in some cases, it's only $15,000. I don't think we can continue to lean on our taxpayers to prop this up, okay? So my strategy here is let's figure out ways that we can work within our existing structure to avoid these costs increasing without having to generate additional revenue to support what we're already doing. Okay, going to jump ahead here, but of course, we'll be available for questions as we move on here. This is just a, a quick peek at your general fund forecast. What I would really highlight for you here, the, the risk that we continue to run is that 55% of our revenues come from two places. Pilots, which are your payment in lieu of taxes, which come from the utilities, and sales tax. The challenge with pilots is that we continue to encourage, as we should, people to make energy-efficient investments in their homes, to buy appliances, to do home weatherization, et cetera. But when people save money on their bills, which we hope they do, that means less money over here on the pilots, okay? There's also, of course, the volatility in the economic cycle and the continued migration to online sales. So being this reliant on sales tax is a real risk for us. And then that third item, even franchise fees, we talked about how the legislature has worked to try to create a, I guess, more pro-business model by reducing some, or capping some of those fees. So really, your top three revenue streams are in a great state of volatility and flux. So I say this to say, we really need to continue to be thoughtful about identifying new revenue streams, diversifying things. Heard the council say in other conversations, not putting all of our eggs in one basket. And I think that's a great term to use to describe what we're talking about here. This is just a very quick look at the use tax, how well this is doing. The proposed budget has this coming in at $6.3 million roughly, which is a $756,000 increase over last year. And like I said, I don't think we've hit our, our ceiling on this at all. I think this is going to continue to flourish and grow. Sales tax summary, I'm encouraged by this, even with, you know, kind of the line from last year coming down. We're still seeing a 4.5% growth in our sales tax revenue. So our, our economic and local businesses seem to be doing well, which is encouraging. The point of this pie chart is just to kind of give you a sense of where your money goes in the general fund. Between salary and benefits, that is roughly 80% of your budget. And I would not say that's uncommon compared to other municipal operations. It's just, you know, you have to have people to do the job. People are one of our most important resources, and, and your budget reflects those priorities. This chart would be awesome if it was Worlds of Fun, but it's not. So this is kind of an alarming trend, and let me, let me point out what's happening here. Your expenditures are continuing, are the red line, and they are, as you can see, we've managed those, driven those down over the years, but without further changes. We see a pretty aggressive escalation in that. I'll give you one example. This is the last year of those federal funds being available for public transit. Next year, our public transit budget is going to increase $1.2 million, just to keep doing what we're doing. So that, things like that are the, the red line going forward. The blue line is revenues. We are forecasting additional revenue growth, but obviously not at the rate that we are forecasting expenses to grow right now. And then the yellow line is your general fund fund balance that without some sort of change in the paradigm right now, in three years, will have burned off all of its surplus, and we will be at zero, or as they say in the business world, bankrupt. This is a more refined look at the general fund forecast. We are projected to end this year at $9.2 million, or 12%. This is the high-water mark in the time that I've worked for the city. So that's something to be encouraged by. But again, I, I would say, take that with a grain of salt because that is largely the product of salary savings from vacant positions the last few years. Not necessarily true cash that we're socking away because our revenues exceed our expenses. And again, without some sort of dramatic intervention, three years from now, we will have eaten up all of our reserves.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yes. Mr. City Manager, we've worked hard, your team has worked hard to build that up, because at one point, we were zero, or damn near zero, so.
We were, we were at two. Yep, which, and, and dropping fast.
Correct. So that was a lot of hard work to put into that, just in case a catastrophe, catastrophe or something major took place. So credit to your team, we just need to try to keep it there, or as high as we can.
Well, thank you. I, I will say, great leadership on the part of this council. Also, we've had great relationships, I know, with, with the folks we've asked for their cooperation and help. Folks like the retiree population who have helped negotiate a more sustainable plan. In all of our labor negotiations, we've really worked hard to educate and inform, and, you know, we won't pretend like those aren't always, you know, contentious times, but in the end, I think we've really negotiated more sustainable work agreements and benefits packages as well. So those have helped stabilize the picture and gotten us to where we are today, in a better place. I want to just mention briefly, I know the council has given me one of the assignments to increase transparency across the organization, particularly around fiscal affairs. One area that we are working to do that in this year is within the Finance and Administration Department. Finance and Administration is nearly an entirely internal-facing operation, things like human resources, payroll, legal affairs. So we are creating a model this year where all of those costs will be centralized within the Finance and Administration Department, creating a separate fund specifically to reflect their cost of doing business. And residents and taxpayers of the city will be able to see then the true cost of applying those across the organization, instead of just, you know, arbitrarily enforcing a percentage amount or something like that on the different users across the, the organization. The enterprise funds, which make up your electric. Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Go ahead, sir.
Sorry. Go back to your slide, thank you. So with this new move, what are some of the stressors, some of the stress points that could create that stress on the general fund? By transferring or not transferring some of the services correctly to the general fund?
Yeah, I, I know, and I, I think you'll all be familiar with, like, I'll, I'll use the example of charges to the, the three utilities. I know for several years in a row, the Public Utility Advisory Board was requesting to see the, the kind of the backup data, if you will, on how we were applying those costs of operation to the electric, water, and sewer utilities. And I will tell you, and Councilmember Fears may remember this better from his time working in the Finance Department, but there was a cost allocation model, but you know, after 25 or 30 years, the organization has graduated. Employees, we've brought new folks in, there weren't a lot of folks who remembered necessarily how all of those aspects of that worked. So it was not easy to explain, it was quite cumbersome, to be honest with you, and it did not promote transparency at all. We've worked it, over the last few years, and it was years of work to do this, but to really truly understand, okay, what does it cost to provide human resources services to those three utilities, to provide legal services to them? We can honestly convey and communicate about that now. But to your point about, I mean, in some places, that means the general fund is recouping less than it was before. But that's okay. We are adequately and accurately charging truly for services and not taking a dollar more than what the, the ratepayers require to pay to support those services.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead.
While you're on this topic, Mr. Walker, I'm looking at Schedule II expenditures by department, and there's, you know, you're looking at like, for example, Finance and Administration, estimated expenditures goes down, you know, by over $6 million. I'm assuming that is what we're looking at here is the, because that's being allocated to the different funds, and through the Internal Service Fund. Is that, I just want to make sure I'm correct on.
You're absolutely right, and I couldn't say it better or add to it. That's, that's exactly what's occurring.
Okay. All right.
Anything else, Councilmember?
No, not right now.
Okay.
Oh, maybe one other question. I'm sorry. So with the addition in the, from the fire tax that was just passed, the, as I look at the budget, the challenge for me is, number one, it's just a lot of information to, to come up with. But, but the other challenge is, is to, with the changes that have occurred through both the Internal Service Fund and then also the tax, like for example, you know, fire is seeing a, a $5 million increase. I'm assuming part of that would be, you know, through the Internal Service Fund, but part of it would also be as a result of the, the fire tax. Would that be accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly.
Yep, good, good clarification.
Anyone else? Okay. Proceed.
Okay, the enterprise funds, I just want to highlight those for you, important part of the budget for the electric, water, and sewer funds. Couple of things I would highlight, we are making strategic drawdowns in both the sewer and water funds this year. But that is because we are investing those funds. and water funds this year, but that is because we are investing those funds back into the system. So CIP, short for Capital Improvements Program. This is a strategic investment in the Water Main Replacement Program, upsizing sewer mains, investing in all of those system issues that will make those function more reliably and at a lower cost to replace them now than future, of course. IPL, we are, after several years of showing a loss, we're showing a small balance there this year, but we are going to cautiously proceed with that to make sure that all of the capital projects that need to be serviced there can truly be supported and serviced there. So we will keep the council apprised of that as we move through the fiscal year, how revenues are coming in, how expenses are projecting, and see if we really are in the position to make some of those investments in the electrical system that are so desperately needed. Just a couple then, highlights across all of the different funds. We're able to add an additional four employees in the sewer fund. These are equipment operators to help with the sanitary collection system. An additional two employees in the stormwater system, again, equipment operators to help improve the stormwater system. We are adding an employee in IPL, a meter-reading supervisor, so to oversee that large function. And as I mentioned, the multi-year plan drawdown for the water and main replacement program. Some may be familiar with Kansas City, Missouri, and all of the main breaks that they've had over the years. That can be avoided here by making these strategic investments ahead of time to make sure that these assets are replaced before they reach end of useful life. And then finally, the council is, of course, aware that a portion of our city falls within the Little Blue Valley Sewer District. And as part of a staggered rate increase that that operation has, we have budgeted $830,000 to cover the City of Independence customers' portion of those rate increases within that district. And then final slide here, just a few other notable changes that I wanted to bring to your attention. Of course, last year, we moved Parks, Recreation, and Tourism into its own standalone funds. So a couple of highlights for them, they are adding a fiscal administrator to help them improve their financial transparency, a maintenance worker to help address our park system, multimedia communications coordinator, which will help particularly with tourism activities, more promotion around that operation, and a right-of-way and maintenance supervisor as parks onboard, mowing responsibilities into their operation. And then we're very excited about what we're able to do in the fire, public safety sales tax as a result of the increase there, an additional 22 new employees we're able to add as a result of the tax increase approved by the voters there. So in summary, I just want to let you know that the budget that has been submitted to you is balanced as required by your charter and the state constitution. We think we have addressed several service-level deployment models to match and make sure that these services match our citizen level of demand. We do make those strategic uses of one-time resources, again, to the tune of 1.7 million as a result of the vacancy savings. We are addressing some of those legacy costs that are growing at these unsustainable rates, such as the health insurance and the overtime programs. We believe that as a result of the services we funded, we will be able to position Independence as a community of choice and as a place of, that meets market demand and makes companies and businesses and employees want to locate into our city. And something we don't take for granted, we are able to avoid any across-the-board reductions to any of our employees or to any of our services, which are already spread so thin and allow us to continue providing the basic services that our citizens rely upon us for. So with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I am happy to stand for any questions.
Anyone, any questions? No questions, because I've got quite a, okay, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, I've got, like, nine, so.
So, Mr. Walker, just a couple of questions, and I have a number of questions that I'll take up with you individually, just because I don't want to use the time. I just want to make sure I'm understanding a lot of things. But one question, back to your, the question on the Internal Service Fund piece, is there a way to know, because there's some substantial changes in, in different departments over the course of the years, is there a way to know how much of that is due to Internal Service Fund, you know, change, and how much of it is due to either more revenue, like in the case of fire, or other changes that we're doing? I'm just curious as to whether that's, there's a way to look at that.
I'm confident there is. I don't have that data in front of me right now, but as I mentioned, the task was quite thorough and laborious to break out the true cost allocation. So I think we would be able to summarize at a meaningful level the causation behind some of those different changes you're seeing.
Okay. Another question is, you know, one of the survey responses that we've seen historically is, you know, for interest by the citizens to increase code enforcement and things of that nature. Have we put, have we done anything in this budget to increase those funds and try to provide additional staff to help in that regard?
Yeah, I hear something that should have been highlighted, and I'm glad you asked the question. So as a result of the use tax that the voters put in place for us, and those additional waterfall amounts to the various funds, we are able to increase property maintenance, code enforcement by an additional $117,500 this year, which is almost double their existing budget. So we've had challenges in previous years where we get to about this point in the fiscal year, grass is starting to grow, it's starting to get tall, and bank accounts starting to look pretty low. So we think that this is not only going to help us carry through a full fiscal year, but help us be more aggressive throughout that entire fiscal year.
The other question I had is relative to the health insurance question that you raised earlier, or a comment you raised earlier. And my question really there is, is do you expect that we'll be receiving a recommendation from the StayWell Committee prior to voting? And if they don't make a recommendation, do you anticipate making a recommendation for us so that we, I'm very interested to know where, what that million dollars there is going to do and how it's going to impact on the StayWell Fund and that particular.
The short answer to your question is yes, and I don't have the luxury of the answer being anything but yes. So the way the StayWell Fund works, the plan year begins on January 1 of each calendar year, but that means open enrollment needs to begin no later than October, and we all remember the challenges with open enrollment last year. So we know that needs to be started as early in the year as possible. If there are to be changes that drive towards that cost avoidance we're speaking to, we owe it to ourselves and to our employees and our plan members to get that identified as soon as possible. So yes, I am confident a recommendation will be coming to you very soon. And this is not new information. I mean, this is something we've talked about for a few years that we need to do. So the awareness has been there, now it's just having the confidence to step forward and figure out. And, you know, as I came to work today, I was, and I mean this sincerely, already privileged to have a note from Mr. Sorenson saying, I'd love to sit down and share ideas with you that I have about this. So we are blessed to have some very interested stakeholders who are passionate about this. So I am very confident that the recommendation will be before you so you can have this full awareness.
Okay, thank you. I'll, like I say, I'll take up my other questions individually, just because those are much more detailed and much more, you know, probably not really representative of questions that everybody might have.
Very good. Happy to do so.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I've got a couple of questions here. You mentioned the budget message that the public transit expense will increase $1.2 million next year. How are you preparing for that one?
That's a great question. We have a great working relationship with the folks at Kansas City Area Transit Authority. Robbie Mackinon and his team there have always been receptive. Tom Skennell, Community Development Director, has been in constant communication with them to figure out what federal grants might be available, what service changes. But one of the really fun things, and I don't want to get ahead of myself, but one of the things they are starting to brainstorm is, rather than having a fixed route system that just drives around town, it might pick up 12 people or it might pick up one, moving to more of an on-demand model, so what we're familiar with, with rideshare programs like Uber and Lyft, to come and pick you up at your doorstep and get you to where you need to go. Now, that is still in the exploratory phase, but we think longer term that that cost is going to be much more manageable than the cost of the fixed route system.
Okay. Thank you. You know, we've talked a little bit about efficiencies and things like that and peer comparisons with other cities. So what other organizational efficiencies can we get, you know, from this? And then, maybe I'll have to talk to you about this in long term, but, you know, financial institutions, you can compare each other to your peers based on, you know, historical data. With cities, there's just really no database that does that, we'd have to do it ourselves. So, you know, what's your game plan there, or should we talk offline on that one?
No, and it's kind of a multifaceted thing, but at a high level, we don't have the luxury anymore of, you know, somebody retires and we just make sure the job posting's up to date and stick it on the wall. I've challenged all the way from an assistant city manager level position, which you'll notice this year, we have reduced that from two to one, all the way down to our frontline employees. Number one, evaluating, is there a way that this organization could consolidate, merge, look for those efficiencies? Are there ways to share services with other communities, or is it cheaper to do this through the private sector? So I will tell you, if you see a job posting on the wall, it has been very thoroughly vetted and thought out, and we'll just continue to have to do that and make sure that at any level of the organization, we can look for those opportunities to consolidate and merge, to make sure our operating efficiencies are as tight as they can be.
Okay. And obviously, pardon me, with the use tax reflection on the Wayfair legislation, as our General Assembly did, do you anticipate this to continue to grow and are any other states ahead of us with how they did their Wayfair so we can kind of use their numbers to compare to ours?
Yes, some of those other states have already fully implemented, and that's why I referred to, I don't think we've hit that ceiling yet, because, as I mentioned, this is going to be a gradual step in, in sync with the reduction in the cable franchise fee. So Wayfair has not come online yet. That was part of the negotiation that occurred in the General Assembly.
Right.
The legislature wanted to make sure that it was a responsible amount of revenue to the cities. We tend to disagree what responsible is. But anyway, nevertheless, we will see that come online in two more years. So what you're seeing now is just organic growth with existing sales within the state of Missouri, not being applied to transactions that are occurring outside of the state. We think this number could easily increase threefold.
Okay. And so we just got to kind of wait to see on that one?
Correct.
And then another question is, and I didn't hear this in the, in the General Assembly, but is the Attorney General, or excuse me, Attorney General, but the state auditor going to look at, you know, are we doing the appropriate taxes from various organizations? You know, who would, who's going to kind of monitor that to make sure that goes forward?
I don't, I can't speak certainly for the state auditor, but I will tell you, and I think, yeah, I'm sorry to do this to this nice young man, but when I was management analyst, I was assigned an audit to look at particularly in businesses that bordered some of the municipalities around us, and weird, wonky places where Kansas City and Independence bisect or intersect one another, to make sure that they were paying their sales tax to the correct jurisdiction.
Right.
But we, in addition to just that strangeness, we've had some increases, like, we keep talking about this fire sales tax. I think it would be wholly appropriate to make sure that's coming online by doing kind of a representative sampling of businesses across the community.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
To dovetail with that, could, is it possible to look at special events that come in that point our sales, or however that flows, that we are recouping as much sales tax for special events and fairs and whatnots that take place here?
Yeah, I think, and the first one, of course, that comes to mind is Santa Calagon, but I think where you have these itinerant merchants who are only here three or four days, but making sure that they're appropriately remitting their sales tax as well is absolutely, I mean, you've seen, we are not in a position to forsake any revenue at all. So wherever we can flip over the proverbial couch cushion and look, I fully recommend that.
And then also, I noticed the water fund exceeded revenues by $5 million, so expenditures exceeded revenues. So can you give me that beat on that?
Yeah, I know that looks kind of freaky at first, but that is the strategic drawdown. So the water fund has had a surplus building the last several years. Great questions have come from PUAB about that, but this is the year where we are really going to ramp up aggressively that water main replacement program. So it's not that they're operating at a loss this year, they're just spending down out of that fund balance, reserve account, to get more aggressive with those main replacements.
Okay. And then obviously, we can ask those folks to see if it's planned to be reasonable compared to the system we have.
I know Dan Montgomery would love to do a study session on that, so we'll get that scheduled for him.
I don't know if we have to do that, but certainly asking that. And in looking for the budget, it looks like all employees are scheduled for a raise. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm glad you mentioned that as well. Where we have contractually negotiated with collective bargaining, of course, those have been budgeted for, but our non-represented employees are slated for a 2% across-the-board wage increase.
Okay. And then just two more questions. How much of the budget is truly discretionary or flexible in your perspective?
Less than 5%. I did an analysis for the council a few years ago, and it might be wise to refresh that. But when you start backing out, you know, utility funds that can only be spent on those three specific utilities, and the sales taxes that have to be spent on those five sales taxes, and things that we have to do because of city code, ordinances, resolutions, et cetera, things that are mandated by the city charter, you know, positions that we have, things of that nature, when you bake all of that out, you really get down to about 5% or less of the total budget that is truly able to be reallocated from year to year. And even that, I would say, be cautious with that number, because if you stop doing something one year, it's probably going to take a little bit of time to transition away from that. So it's not like you decide this year, we're not going to do it. It takes a little bit of transition time, but at best, I would say probably 5%.
Okay. And then one last question, unless any of my colleagues have any other questions. What's your biggest pressure point from your concern with the budget, you know?
Maybe it's because I'm reading this book on Ford Motor Company right now, but I would say, it's health insurance. We are, we are set up for a time and place when all organizations were enjoying economic growth, but we aren't in that same place now, and these costs have just outpaced our revenue stream. That's probably the most rapidly growing area of the budget each year, and it's important that we have a strong benefit system. I can't discount that. That's critical to recruiting and retaining talent into the city. But we've got to make sure we have enough cash left over to actually provide services to. So it's a balancing act, but I would say that's probably the tightest pressure on the budget as we sit here today.
Very good. Anyone else, other questions?
Just have one.
Go ahead.
Just crystal ball time. I ask you every year. So it should be, it should be shined up, ready to go, it's no surprise. So your revenue projections that you're making based on what we're seeing going into a new budget year, we're dealing with a lot of pressures and strains from the world, may not see it immediately here, but it will eventually arrive. How confident are you in your revenue numbers that, I mean, 5%, that's pretty thin margin to have to adjust for?
Yeah.
And what's the contingency plan if things, I mean, we've got inflation, you're starting to see the rates go up, they're talking about stagflation. These are things that are, that could hurt us quickly.
Yeah.
And so I'm just, I'm curious, I always ask you in that crystal ball, and your optimism to come out, which I always appreciate, but... And so, I'm just, I'm curious, I always ask you in that crystal ball, and your optimism to come out, which I always appreciate, but, you know, when I, the first presentation you ever gave, we were like 10 years out from a revenue crisis.
Right.
Last year was like five years. Now, we're really looking at two, three?
Yeah.
So, it seems like we're getting there quicker.
You're right.
And I just wonder, what is the contingency? Because that 5% is a very thin margin.
It is. You're right about that, council member. The first part of your question on the revenues, I'll be honest, I wanted to be more aggressive on the revenues this year. I'm glad, as we stand here today, I was not, because since then, foreign nations have invaded other foreign nations, and inflation has gone bananas, and as you say, where is the end in sight on this? So, it can always get worse, but I think we are budgeted for just the bare minimum of revenue growth this year without being, I don't think there's optimism in those revenues anywhere. I think there's a healthy amount of pessimism, and if we come in under those revenues somewhere, then I really think the bottom has fallen out in the global economy. The contingency plan at this point remains the general fund reserve, but as you've seen, that's not a long-term strategy for us. You know, different communities have employed different theories and approaches, and I know some cities have a 20 or 30% fund balance. We don't. We tend to kind of try to focus on the here and now. So, to the degree we can continue to add to that, I think it's critical, but I think the most important thing that we can do is to continue, and you and I have, I know, had this conversation, so we're having it for everyone else now, is create that kind of community of choice that brings people here. Over the last decade, I mean, you pointed this out to me the other day, our population grew by 6,000 people, which is, I mean, it's nice that it grew, but that's really not sustainable growth. In my opinion, we have the right tools, for the most part, out there with the sales taxes and all that. We just don't have the other side of the equation. We don't have enough people paying into the system. And we don't have growth happening at a rapid enough pace to keep up with the everyday cost of doing business, so I think we've taken some important steps in the last year, but I think we're going to have to continue to be aggressive to find those right kind of development opportunities and those right kind of investments in our basic services that make this, you know, when people are deciding, where am I going to live in the metro, independence is at the top of that list.
I appreciate the continued optimism. And I think we always end it with something like, well, I hope you're right.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So, I hope you're right.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. So, with Councilman Steinmar's line of thinking,
Yeah.
so, everything can be in flux, right, as everything you said, so, but at some point, we need to be positioned to be able to, when things get back to a sense of normal,
Yeah.
to be able to retain residents, keep them here, attract them, keep them here, same with business. But also, more importantly as well is tourism. How do we attract, how do we have a product that is attractive for people who want to come and come again and stay? Maybe stay longer, get that dollar floating around more strongly and repetitively through our system. So, what do you see as some strategies there? As, so you're looking at the 30,000 square foot, 30,000-foot view looking down?
I'm glad you brought that up, and Councilmember Steinmar, I should have mentioned tourism, I think, in my estimation is an opportunity for us as well. One of my first meetings when I came to the city was with a panel of housing developers, and the conversation was, well, how do we get people to move here and build houses? And it always struck me, it's still with me, one of the developers said, "Look, you just need to start with getting people to come to your town. Like, you guys think you have an identity problem? I'm going to tell you it's worse. People just aren't even thinking of you right now." And get people to come to town, get them to come eat at Nivolor, get them to come shop at the square, get them to come hang out at the mall, or spend the night, you know, at one of our hotels. And I think that's absolutely a strategy that could pay dividends for us, because here's why. The great thing about tourism is those people will come to the community, they will eat, they will hopefully stay, they will shop, but they will go back home too. So, it doesn't necessarily present a heavy, as heavy of a cost burden as when somebody locates to the community. But it also does start to spread that word around that people could find this as a community of choice as well too. It's sustainable growth, is what I'm trying to tell you here. I think what the Truman Library has done is our blueprint. I think that investment now, I know it's not a $33 million investment, but it's scalable. It's taking an asset that has a prominent place in American history and investing in it in a way that tells a story that today's consumer wants to see. We have every opportunity to that, for example, with the Trails Museum. We are the jumping off place of the westward migration, and I'm here to say that people of my generation are the ones that were playing the Oregon Trail game in school and loading up their wagon in Independence before they headed out to get dysentery. So, we could create that place where people want to come with their families, their children now, and have a unique visitor's experience. But I think, you know, for example, the last, oh gosh, what, three or four years ago, the General Assembly voted in a, an option to apply a tourism and museum tax, which would be applied only to food and beverage at a establishment, not the grocery store, but a, you know, dine-in establishment in Independence. You know, exploring, does that kind of tool make sense? Is that, you know, our top priority of all the tools that are out there, knowing the economic constraints that exist? Is that the one that could take us the furthest, the fastest? So, I think we have to explore, how do we get the cash necessary to invest in these historic and tourism sites to make them a kind of destination that the outside visitor wants to come and see?
I would, I would agree with that wholeheartedly. I think we've seen the investments in the different parts of our town. Inglewood is a great example of how they have taken a vacant building and have fundraised to a tune of close to $2 million. They are doing well over there, and they're creating an atmosphere for, in their neighborhood, for, to live affordably, to live there, to buy there. So, they are positioning themselves to reap the benefits as well as the whole city by what they are doing and developing there. So, it's us that, as a city, to help them modify and move that. I had a meeting with stakeholders in Fairmont. As the third phase gets down towards Wilson Road, we want to be positioned and ready to go for that development. So, it's getting our city and our train of thought to be able to capture these development opportunities, which in turn spends the tax funds back here. Congressman Cleaver has worked very hard and pushed through to get the downtown streetscape funded, so it's going through the appropriation committee. So, even our government leaders are seeing the importance and the reemergence of vitality of a downtown to bring that draw in. And no other town has a Harry Truman Library. How do we create and capture those funds? I mean, that's, that's the crux of it. We get pilots and we get tax funds.
Right.
Pilots isn't going to be there forever, and we shouldn't be relying so heavily on it like we do.
Right.
So, we've got to find and be positioned and ready to grab that other funding sources.
Correct. I agree, and I have seen time and again where when you create these destination-type experiences for people, whether it be a museum or a shopping node, that's the kind of things that draws people out of their homes and out of their communities. I can shop at Target anywhere. In fact, I can do it from my living room if I want, but if I want something that makes me feel like I'm kind of getting out of town for the weekend or for the day, you've got to create something special that pulls people into your city, and I think we have the opportunity. It's just, this is a money-solvable problem.
So, this, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, this goes into one other question. I was in the office today staring at the police building that they're putting a new roof on, and I absolutely understand why we're doing it, but at what point do we just stop throwing bad money, good money at a bad product? Of reinvesting funds into a building, city hall building, the police building, that leaks, foundation problems, sewer problems? I mean, all of that with both buildings that are getting old and antiquated. That, at some point, it's going to merge, or we're putting too much money into a building with not enough out of it.
Yeah, it's a, as you say, kind of doing that cost-benefit analysis, but, you know, also considering factors like, what is the market value of a corner intersection like Truman Road and Nolan Road, where who knows what the vehicle count is through there? I'm sure, I'm sure that's been recorded, but, you know, yeah, are we, is that the highest and best use for our community for that land? And is that, you know, renovating that facility still, you know, how's that compare to building new? I know a few years ago, we commissioned a study, and it showed the economics at that time. It was more cost-effective and the better use of financial resources to build a new facility. But it was, again, a money problem of where is the cash going to come to do that? I think of the work that this council has done the last few years, we've identified those right plans. It's a matter of prioritization now and figuring out what is the most responsible way to generate the resources to implement some of these opportunities that we're seeing.
A lot of big challenges.
Exciting challenges.
Good phrase. I like that. Good phrase.
All right, I'm good. Councilmember, any more questions? Good. With, you have any more?
Mr.?
Yes, go ahead. Councilmember Holbert?
Online. Yeah, thank you, sir. Mr. Walker, a couple of requests really. One, as day well progresses and we get closer to the budget deadline, will you just keep the, please keep the council members updated on that?
Yes, sir. No surprises. Can't manage a secret.
There you go.
Appreciate, I appreciate that very much. For the team gentleman sitting over your left shoulder, are there any changes loggers or the retirement health insurance benefits in this budget?
I was so in awe of thinking about Bob that I didn't quite hear your question. Can you repeat it?
He's done that to people his entire life. No, are there any changes to the retirees' health insurance benefits in this budget?
Oh, thank you for asking. No, no, sir. We, we worked really hard the last, oh, three years ago or so to identify a sustainable model and plan, and we've implemented that, and that continues to serve us well, to the tune of like a $6 million savings each year, give or take. So, no, we, what I'm contemplating is figuring out what we do with our Cigna health insurance plan for everyday employees, their spouses, their dependents, et cetera.
Sure. Okay. One more thing, and this is, we haven't talked about this much, but I've been, it's been ruminating. The Parks Department, but I know there's, but for a few new employees, but we don't have much of a tourism department right now. Is that a fair way to put it?
Very fair, yes.
And I know we have taxed go to parks and tourism combined. Is that right? 2.0, 2.2 million, 2.0, over 2 million?
The, yeah, the tourism transient guest tax, yeah, generates somewhere between 1.8 and 2.2 million annually, depending on if there's a global pandemic.
We're closing in on the budget, and I don't know if there's time to do it, but I'd like to consider budgeting for, and I'll certainly, you know, have more discussions with you or staff about it and my fellow councilmembers, but I was thinking maybe we should take some money from that fund and do an RFP or RQ and hire an outside marketing firm? Maybe to pump up, you know, we've still got time to do some advertising for summer. I know it's not a lot, but it may be worth it. I mean, I hate to see us go through the first summer of non-COVID lockdowns and the first summer of the brand-new Harry Truman Library, and us not contribute a lot to, you know, that opportunity.
Yeah, if I may suggest for the council's consideration, because so much gets thrown at you and your capacities, what might be helpful is to have the Parks Recreation and Tourism Director, Morris Heidi, do a presentation that I think he gave, oh, four, five, six months ago, where we kind of took a look at what we were spending on marketing versus what we were spending on historic site maintenance, and kind of identified some of those maintenance challenges, like the Avail Mansions, the back of it's getting to a point where it's near collapse. There's that large cracked wall at the Frontier Trails Museum, so we were going to kind of get aggressive this year on some of the maintenance items. I will tell you, another part of that, and Morris would do this more justice, but our tourism revenue is up, and I think that can largely be credited to the fact that more and more people are comfortable traveling again.
Oh, yeah.
So, on the other side of that coin, I think you're right. We want to make sure that we are hitting a sweet spot of doing enough marketing to make sure people know when they're going down I-70, what they could find if they would just pull off the road. So, yeah, maybe we could kind of do a refresher on that, if that's an appropriate term to use, and just make sure we're in sync with the council's vision of where they want to go with this.
No, I would very much appreciate that. I, you know, I'm not talking about, I wouldn't have the idea to, you know, split off a million bucks or anything, but is it worth it for us to carve out an extra 50,000 or 100,000 to, you know, try to try to get a few more heads in beds this summer?
Sounds, we can work to get that pulled together for the council's benefit. Seeing some nodding heads here, so I think we've got good direction to do so.
Very good. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Walker, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other councilmembers' questions?
Just one more.
Go ahead.
So, as we're talking about parks and tourism, you know, if we, we understand the benefit of having a town with the history that we have, and we should do more with it, but if you drive a car with no oil, it only goes so far. Back in 2019, we did a study on the repairs necessary on all of our historic sites. It totaled at about 2.3 million dollars in 2019. We've done nothing, really. So, I got to think with supply, materials, labor, everything is probably pushing three or better million. If we don't become aggressive with that, we're not going to have tourist sites. And I know that that puts strain on any budget, but at some point, we've got to come to the realization that if we don't care for these structures the way that we should, with the investment that we need to, we're not going to have that tourism that we all hope to have and bring them in. So, I would like to see us have an aggressive plan, whether it's a two-year, three-year plan, and start knocking these out. I mean, there was one building, and I have all of them at home, I can look at them all. There was one building that we were close to just having to shut down.
Right.
That it just isn't a safe building at all.
Yeah.
So, I mean, at some point, this council needs to work with you to get, we always tend to react to all of it, you know, it's bad, it's bad, it's falling down, as you described. We've got to get proactive with it, and if we plan to keep it. And then, we have to have more opportunity in that to do so, because let's remember, while everybody left here, would you say to get what? The, in the wagons, they left?
Dysentery.
Dysentery. The folks who are actually making the money selling picks and shovels were the ones helping them go out to do so.
Right.
And that's okay. We need to be that town of opportunity again, where we embrace more small business. We need to be that town of opportunity again where we embrace more small business investment, medium-sized business investment. We need to make it easier. We've talked about this. I think, I think Tom's done a fantastic job in that too. But we, we've got to be really aggressive if we're going to build that next, next, next level of, or stage of revenue for you.
Right. And I mean, just to marry what, you know, Councilmember Perkins is saying with, with you, Councilmember Steinmeier, you know, step one is just, yes, make sure that these assets are preserved. I don't think it does any good to market a, a pile of bricks. That's probably not going to be too compelling to come see. But then step two, if you, I mean, you look at the Truman Library and then you even expand out to, if you've had the pleasure and opportunity to visit the, the Lincoln Library or even the, what I call the Dirt Museum, but the Flap, Flint Hills Museum in Manhattan, Kansas. It's experiential. It's 4D theaters and flashing lights and videos. It's not reading static plaques on a wall anymore. And that's what we're competing against and that's what we have to get our stuff up to the standard of if we're going to want folks to make Independence the place that they're going to come for the weekend.
Not everybody's going to want to come see the largest ball of twine.
That's true. True.
So anything we can do to be more aggressive and assertive to, to care for our history is only going to benefit us and reward the generations to come. So hopefully we can figure this out.
Concord.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Again, Councilman Steinmeier brings up some really good points and not to belabor the point, the, the investment that's taking place with the, the Truman Library, then the, the potential investment that's moving on a great track with the National Park Service and its potential $8 million investment here on the square, marries perfectly with the conversation that we're having. And for us to use the, as much funds that we can. But this is, this is a plan that's going to have to take our, our citizens to, to really sink their teeth in and come along with us. The use tax, as much as we don't like to use that word. I think we're almost to the point of, of disrepair to, to really get these sites back together. But also in the master planning for this, it's also a great layout for what the National Front Trails Museum could actually be. And it most certainly could be that regional draw, if not a national draw. But within that plan develops that and gives us some funding for our Veil Mansion, Big and Wagner, and so on and so forth before they get to the point of no return.
Yeah, and, and to your point, I, if, if you have the time, I would invite you or anybody listening to, to look up Oregon City and the ending of the Oregon Trail and that museum, and then juxtapose that against what's here in Independence. I mean, that's but one example, but again, these are the kind of things we are, these are, this is our competition. This is the standard that we kind of need to set in our mind if we are to get the minivans into town.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay. Going on then, thank you, Mr. Walker. Next one is staff reports on boards and commissions. Madam State Clerk?
We have one recommendation tonight for the Heritage Commission. A recommendation has been made to reappoint Dwayne Stevens, appoint Lee Argo and Josh Goldner again to the Heritage Commission. If there are no objections, we can add a resolution to the next agenda.
Any objections? Saying none, we'll do that. Okay. Anything else? Madam State Clerk? Okay. With that, it looks like we're adjourned for the study session, unless you have anything else?
I have one more thing.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more thing. Typically, we don't do this at a study session, but I do want to say that.
You are on thin ice. I'll let you go this time.
I appreciate the courtesy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the last public meeting that, that we are holding for tonight. And I want to say a big thank you and well wishes to our Executive Secretary, Sheila Saxton, who's not here right now, but she's at home watching, watching this meeting with, with Shirley and her mother and herself. So a big thank you for all the years of service, 39 years. Sheila started with the City of Independence and the Tourism Historic Preservation Department, then transitioned into the council office as a executive administration in 1988. So she's been here, has seen a lot, done the diddle machines, done the ashtrays and the, the council meetings. She's been a great friend of mine. I've known her since 1996, when I first got on the council. A lot of great memories, a lot of great counsel. I'm going to miss her dearly. I know the city's going to miss her dearly, but thank you for everything you've done and congratulations. June 1 is, is her last day here and, and I begged and pleaded with her to stay, but, but she won't, darn it. So thank you, Sheila.
And, and if I can jump on too, I know you probably knew Sheila way back when because you and I both worked at City Hall in the 80s. So, and I knew her then and, you know, just a, and she's just a great person and I just, I, I like to call her a friend. And I agree with you, my friend, that she does a great job. So if we could give a big round of applause for her, I'd be grateful. Thank you. And we should have had her on the screen so she could actually blush and we could see it. So that would have been, that'd have been good, a little blush and a little scene that. With that being said, we're ready to adjourn. Thank you.